Well, Jay, I'm pleased you could be here, so we'll get started. From all rise, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Before we get into our agenda, again, we just remind you of our mission and vision statement. Our vision, inspiring all learners to be engaged and successful. Our mission, to provide an enriching environment to meet the needs of all learners. And then our core values of respect, integrity, students first, and excellence. So as we go through our agenda tonight, please try to remember those as we make decisions. All right, the agenda, we need to have a motion for approval. There's been no changes.
No changes.
So a motion to approve the agenda.
I make the motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Tom, do you have a second?
A second.
Gloria. I'll go with it. Show a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Hearing of delegates, I don't see any. Consent items, I know we all received those in our packet earlier or later last week. And Todd, did you get through the invoices?
I did. They all look good, they're very well organized.
Usually are. Thank you for doing that. So, any questions with the consent items or any comments?
I will do some financial review of our CAR certified annual reports done and FY21 is closed. So I'll review some of that stuff in superintendent report.
Yes, hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the consent items?
Motion to approve the consent items.
Thanks, Brett, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Todd, do we have a motion and a second, any questions, any further questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. All right, we'll move right into our superintendent's report.
Yeah, so in the superintendent's report, there's some graphs. I'm going to talk about a couple of different things. Mary Beth has completed our certified annual report. And I wanted to outline just a few measures that school districts typically use to kind of forecast our financial health and project our financial health moving forward. The first is the solvency of the district. Solvency is, you know, basically, we take that, you know, the money that we have, the balance, the fund balance that we have in comparison to our revenues. And that equals our solvency. Our solvency at the end of FY21 was 15.3%. 5% is considered good, 15% is considered excellent. So we're very good with the money that we have, the cash that we have, which is what that would represent. The second measure that I wanted to have us take a look at, which is on the back, is our unspent authorized budget total. You know, I usually use the term unspent balance, which we're talking about the same thing. And it's the amount of unused district general fund capacity. So before solvency, we're talking about cash, we're talking about money. This is our capacity to spend, our spending authority on behalf of the students. That's, and so the unspent unauthorized, our authorized budget is the capacity we have left at the end of a year. Really generally, if the UAB, the unspent balance, is declining, that's an indicator of, you know, strain on the district. You know, we're spending more than we're bringing in. Our trend lines, you can see are, you know, they're going up. We, 18.8%, which is slightly lower than the year before. A minimum of 10 to 15% is recommended not to exceed 25. So we're in a perfect spot in what our unspent balance is. The last measure is our unspent balance specifically for our categorical funds. So categorical funds are funds that can only be spent on their category, on their specific, such as tag, the TLC fund, teacher salary supplement, or preschool is another. Those are four examples of categorical funds. The big thing here, you know, is we want to spend our preschool money on our preschool program. We want to spend our tag money on our tag program. We don't want to bank those and build those. We want to use that money where it's intended to be used. So we want those percentages, the categorical balances, to go down. You see, in 2016, 17, it was 15% and it's down to 8. So we're using those appropriately. And that's a good measure and something that looks good from that. So, you know, you look at just those three indicators, you know, financially, things look very good. And we knew that they did. Closing FY21, we're certainly anticipating our financials to look good again this year. I think across the state, school finances look pretty good with FY21 closing. Some of that has to do with COVID, where we have extra money for some of those expenses. And we would certainly fall into that category for sure. So very, very healthy balances which we have, which is, which great and allows us to spend money on our students. Any questions on the financial part? We'll move on. We'll continue. As that closes, Mary Beth and I are now working to build our models moving ahead, loading our stuff in from our current realities. And I'll be able to give you some pretty accurate forecasting like I've done in the past. And probably next month, I think, we'll have those models done. We can forecast out five or six years. And we build those forecasts on, you know, aggressive expending and not aggressive revenues. Not assuming we will get a whole lot of SSA from the state. I think we usually set that at 2%. We set our increase in salaries at 2.5. I usually add a teacher. I even have an added administrator in some of the models that we've used so far. So we'll show those models to you here in the next month or so. The Iowa Association of School Board Convention is coming up in November. It's held November 18th at the Iowa Event Center in Des Moines. This is typically a very, very well-done event. Last year, it was not in person, so we didn't attend. Two years ago, I know many of us had the opportunity to go down and see Hamish Brewer. I know was one of the speakers and he was fantastic. There is a couple of keynotes, Brandon Fleming and Yang Zhou. So those are a couple that are highlighting this year's convention. And if you're interested in attending, let myself or Mary Beth know. And I know Rodney has the flyer here tonight, too.
Anybody who's probably received it, but if you'd like to look at it.
Certified enrollment, we take that count on October 1st, but we actually certify it on October 15th. That gives us some time to look through our numbers. There's always some students that are counted in multiple districts, duplicates, to get all that ironed out. So we're in the process, I think we probably have our students ironed out right now. We got a couple of other things that we're looking at, but we'll certify on October 15th. The numbers look very good. Our total school age students is up around 40 students. So that's the number of students we have in our buildings is up around 40 students. Our certified number is up less than that, you know, probably about 20 or so, 2021. That's the number that we're funded on. We do eventually get open enrollment numbers in for those other students as well, but we don't get some of those per pupil funding expenditures for those students. But overall, enrollment looks very, very good. Kind of broke it down for you, and you can compare this back to the two previous years. You can see that our certified enrollment is up 21 kids. So that's the, that's the number of kids who live in our district that are coming to our school. We have 21 more of them than last year. Our open enrollment, so kids who are coming to our school from another district is up 18 students from last year. Another indicator that we probably weren't expecting is open enroll out is down. So that's like a positive net gain when that happens. And then together, that all equals the positive 40. Whole grade share in from Laverne, staying about consistent where it is around the 50, 50 numbers. So it looks very, very good. Last reminder I have on there, it's just a voter reminder to get out and vote in our local elections, the first Tuesday after the first Monday, which is as early as it can possibly be this year, November 2nd. So get out and vote. We have three board positions that are up for reelection, as well as some other local positions in the community.
Any questions for Joe?
Are there any other names on the ballot besides?
There are not, just our three incumbents. Which will be Gloria.
Yeah, you still hope people will turn out, so. There's only one contested race in the community.
Just one comment on the school board conference. If you plan to go, let Mr. Carter and Mary Beth know pretty quickly so motel rooms can be reserved. A lot of schools do these about six to eight months in advance, reserving hotels. So let her know pretty quickly so we can see how many are going. I plan to attend, I already told Mary Beth, I'm going down Wednesday night, sometime Wednesday night. And we'll be there all day Thursday and have Friday morning meetings at the association. So wherever she finds me lodging, we'll go from there.
And I'm going as well. And you see later on in the agenda, we need to appoint a delegate. Rodney has shown interest in that, so.
That's the Wednesday before.
The Wednesday before.
Talk about that in your business. Anything else on the superintendent's report? All right, we had connect with us, Ms. Janie Eichen, and she's going to talk to us a little bit here.
I think it's a top line, yeah.
Yes.
Everyone's favorite, that really is my favorite. Mr. Carter is going to mandate for me. I'm trying to put everything up there so you can click without having to click on anything. So one of the goals that I kind of have for the district is to look at a balanced assessment system. It's something that the state kind of strives for us to have as well for how we look at making data-based decisions, which is what we should all be doing. So if you'll click, I kind of like to start with this because I think this is what data makes me think of. It's this really cute little picture and lots is going on, but what are we supposed to get at it? What are we supposed to be looking at? And that's how data can sometimes feel. We have a lot of it, but what is it we're trying to see? So this is how we kind of look at, if you keep clicking on, the pieces of the puzzle of the different data sources that we should be using in our studying. And each one of them is equally as important, but they kind of all come together to determine how we make decisions. So universal screening data is a big piece of that. Diagnostic processes, how we use assessment for learning, and how we look at our summative assessments. And each one of these, I could spend a whole session talking with you on. We're going to look just at one today, but I think it's important to understand all of the pieces so that you have context for the data that you're going to look at right now from fall. So up there, you kind of see a, I guess it's kind of a good practice for how we look at data. We sometimes like to think of it as what do students need? But it's just as much for teachers and their teaching as it is for the students because it tells you a lot about what we as educators need to provide to meet the needs of the students. So we respond to both needs, teachers and students using it. But we shouldn't just end there. It's also helpful to assist in the kind of continuous improvement cycle that we engage in as well, from the system level all the way down to the student level. And it's really important that we look at data in both of those perspectives so that we're making really sound decisions at the system level to best meet the needs of all of our learners. So really brief, just a little bit on each of those kind of pieces. Universal screening data, that's when we kind of ask questions like, how healthy is our core instruction, the classes that kids go to every day? How healthy is that and what students might be at risk of needing some additional supports? And we have a lot of sources that we can use for that. A lot of them come from the Backstreet Assessment Suite that the state actually provides us at the K-6 level and then that we have expanded on past that. And then we also look at diagnostic processes because those don't tell us everything. We sometimes need to dig a little bit deeper. And we like to answer questions of, so what specific area of needs do kids have? Or what are their strengths, whatever the emphasis is? And so those two pieces usually go together. We kind of look at some data three times a year and then we dig a little bit deeper to find some needs of specific students. Then we have the big piece of the puzzle of, well, what about what they're doing in the classroom every day? And that's when we get into those assessments for learning, both formative and then progress moderate. So formative, that's a lot of what all of our teachers do, are the standards being met? It's a pretty simple question, but kind of loaded in some of the answers. And then what next steps do we need to take? And that comes in the form of teachers' classroom assessment checks, formal, informal observations, all those kinds of things. And then for students who do need a little bit more support, we also want to ensure we're monitoring their progress if they are working on specifically targeted skills. So if they're falling a little behind in some of their coursework or in some of the skills that they should be at, we want to make sure we're monitoring their progress because if it's not working, we need to make some changes before it kind of goes on too long. And we use lots of different assessments for that. Some of them are mandated to us because of the Early Literacy Law. But then as we've expanded up through the elementary grades, we have a lot of other assessments that we use as well. And then lastly, the one that people sometimes are most intrigued by is that summative assessment data. Are students achieving adequately? And how do we look for patterns and trends? That's where, you know, ISASs or Iowa assessments, all those kind of pieces come into play. Our Iowa School Performance Profile, post-secondary readiness data is a really good piece to look at, you know, are we doing what we are studying up to do in this district? It can also be when teachers do like a big unit test and it's kind of their final. We look at that as well as summative. And a way of an image to think about that because that's sometimes difficult to think, well, what's the difference between what those teachers do in the classroom for formative and for summative? Summative is kind of when we need to get to the top. And formative are all the little rungs of the ladder that we have to step on to get there. And so we want to, we don't just hop to the top, we have to have some supports along the way. And that's what those formative assessments are. So it's a super quick look at everything data-related, but I want to point out to you how we are doing as a district on the universal screening aspect of it. So we do that three times a year, so we just did fall. And we give these assessments to pre-K through eighth grade. I put an asterisk there because we are expanding that into high school. And so I'm meeting with the kind of high school assessment coordinator this week to think about how to roll that out. And the best way to do that, it'll be really nice because we could use a little bit more data like that at the high school level to help make some decisions. So preschool also has an assessment that we look at as well on their growth. And then after we screen kids and we give them these assessments, grade level and content level meetings happen so that we can look at that data and make some decisions going forward. And so I took a screenshot of a couple of the tools that we use for that. So I can't of course share any links with you because there's individual student data in this, but this is what each grade level has had received. Myself and a couple of the instructional coaches have been compiling that data. And then we meet with the teachers and we kind of give them their sheet that sort of says, all right, here's your class in a nutshell, here's some of the students. And we kind of walk through a little process to think about what else do we need to know about them? And how can we utilize some of our support systems to get them the support they need? So that's that student level that I was talking about. But on a system level, I also compiled a universal screening snapshot that really starts to track where we're at. But then also on the black there, you can't see it, but you can see the contrast of the black. I have five years' worth of data to really look at some patterns and trends. So it's the same assessment, but we're looking at it from the student level and the system level. And that has led to some suggestions for some things we might need to do within our core based off of that trend data over the last couple of years. So that's how we've looked at it. Here in the last couple of weeks, we've been doing that. And here is the data. So this is what we look like here at Algonia. The ones that are kind of in the back blue, those are ones that we report out on that doesn't really mean too much other than the state requires us to list a default assessment so that they can compile data for us. And so that's the assessment that we use. So those percentages are the students who are reading, what we would kind of say the grade level benchmark. So you can see for reading, 46% for kindergarten prep. That is very, very common. These are the first time those little kids have taken any of those things. So that's a kind of a common number for math. But you can see kindergarten, 86%, first grade 55%, and then second through eighth. I have also included the other assessment that we look at as well because we give two. Just because we're looking at the number that's in the back blue doesn't mean you don't look at some of the other, like the auditancy and CDM there. Those are just as important, but those, the ones in blue are what we report out on. And the number PAR, that's the number who are persistently at risk. So per the ELI law, we are required to intervene with students who are persistently at risk, which means they have not met the benchmark two testing periods in a row. It's the state's efforts to say, we need to intervene as soon as we can because we all know the statistics about, once you get to third and fourth grade, it's just really difficult to kind of remediate some of those issues. So we push it a lot at the K-3 levels. So that shows kind of the number that we have right now of actual students. And then we have similar data for math. There is no law attached to the math, but it's a good practice. So I just kind of apply the same logic that we do for reading to the math numbers as well. If you click one more time, Joe, these are our healthy indicators. The state has done a lot of work of replacing site visits with these healthy indicators. And they just kind of look to see, hey, how's the school doing? Do they look healthy? And 80% is what's considered healthy because at 80%, if we can get most of our, 80% of our kids, we can support the other 20% with our programs like our Title I funds and with special education. We can do that without it being like a big tax to the system. When you start to get, you know, past 80, that starts to get a little trickier just to be able to meet the needs of all the kids. So right now, the elementary, we have screened 97% of our kids, which is fantastic. And we are at 72% median benchmark for both the elementary and the middle school, which really is quite good in comparison to some other places. And so we've done some good work there.
Which we're going to show you here in a minute.
Next, and you'll see those comparisons. So I pulled four seemingly random districts that are within a radius of around here. And you can see what their current numbers are and you can see where Algonia compares to that.
District's about the same size as Algonia?
So obviously, there was a COVID impact, right?
Little bit of a COVID impact, yeah.
Do you have like kind of a before COVID and after COVID data?
I have a little bit of before and after COVID on that screener snapshot that he clicked back to. We can go back and follow some cohort classes and really look to see what was happening with that cohort group of kids. So for instance, the students who might be in third grade right now. We can kind of go back and see, you know, kindergarten wasn't as much affected. And then we have first, and then they, you know, that was break shutdown, and then we have second. So we could go back and look at that. We kind of talked about that with a couple instructional coaches. It'd be interesting to do that. We could also look at it from, let's just take second grade. And what did second grade data look like three years ago? And then two years ago, and then one year ago, and see if we can kind of pinpoint some areas to go. So that is sort of next on the list of how much COVID did have an impact to that.
Because certainly the first grade really sticks out, right?
Yeah.
I'm sure that's a, that's a big year when it comes to reading and.
We had some really good discussions about what happened in, you know, kindergarten masks. Did it help children seeing the mouths of that teacher of when you were trying to make those foundational skills and see what phonics looks like? But we have some, there's some things in place now to be able to kind of make up for that. And it's kind of nice to see on that comparison. One though, that there were some definite trends across local places as well in some of those. So.
Some of the same type of issues.
First grade was, was fairly low across everywhere.
And I would say the impact for that cohort group of kids, you have to also remember, was the end of their preschool year as well as their kindergarten year. So certainly heavily impacted at a very, you know, an age that's very influential in their, in their learning specifically in literacy.
And so you mentioned your, and maybe you don't have it tonight, but you're going to start looking at how each grade kind of has progressed.
Yep, yep. And it won't be difficult to do, we're just going to kind of dedicate some time. And we want to start with that first grade class. We want to look more at even third grade and kind of background because we have some, you know, I think the fourth grade, there's, that's some pretty good data. So I'm kind of curious, what happened in third grade? You know, and asking them a little bit, what did you do? Because you know they came in with gaps. And so kind of using each other to kind of hear, what did we do that we saw had an impact? And we are doing some things in each of the elementaries right now to kind of make up a little bit for that, looking at some of our foundational skills, spending a lot more time than we normally would at the beginning of the year. But we know that there's some data to justify that time spent, so.
We're doing the most that we've done in the three years I've been here to have data influence our instruction than we've ever done before. This is part of it, but there's also the ongoing daily interventions that are taking place that are based upon our formative assessments that were, that are happening at the elementary level and middle school level. You know, and we have all those interventions put in place to do that. So we have a lot going on right now in digging into our data and then our, our instruction then as a result of that data. So it's really good stuff.
One more piece on there that kind of shows some district level data. I think it's one more click there. So this is, it's just literacy. The state provides us with a tool called Panorama that does a lot of the calculating for us on this. But these numbers look really, really good because we also want to look at subgroups. That's a piece that sometimes we don't always think to, to look at is, you know, it's great to look at how all of our students are progressing, but it's just as important to look at some of our subgroups as well because that can help inform some decisions that need to be made. And so the greater ones there, those are students who are on IEP. And then the next set of white are students who qualify for free and reduce lunch. And so when we filter out for those as well, our numbers, you know, continue to look pretty good. Percent median benchmark on an IEP, that might look low to you, but that's, that's fairly good for, given that a lot of those kids, it's difficult to make a grade level benchmark when we know that you're already struggling below grade level because that's typically why you have an individual education plan. And so I think the exciting part about that is you can kind of see we've kind of slowly trudged up in that. And then that white line or the black line with the white in it underneath, those were our numbers from the year before. And they're probably a little difficult to see, but every single one of them increased. And on that whole report that you're looking at now, when I looked at that from last fall, every single box was increased, some of them quite a bit. And so I think the way that we're using data to inform some of those decisions is to kind of paint off in what we see across the district. So just another piece that we track again from that system level all the way down to the student level. And that's it. If you have any questions.
Any questions for Jean? Well, we always appreciate, I do appreciate people who love data or data. Because I'm one that loves it when you bring it to me like this and not have to sit through it all to get to this point. So thank you for doing that.
So the middle school, so did they do the reading last year to look at the seventh and eighth?
Yep, yep, we have. We just, everything that you saw on there for the indicators, that's what we're required to report out on from K-6. I could get all that data, I just have to do it a little more hand calculated, but we could, we could certainly do that. But seventh and eighth numbers I've gone with a lot, especially our number that is screened. The middle school's done a really good job at making this a more common practice because we're screening almost 100% of our students. So we're actually just giving them the assessment, which can be difficult to do, but they made it a priority, so we've done a lot of good work there, so.
Thank you, Jeanne, for the session. All right, we'll get into our new business report, the agenda. As we talked about earlier, or Joe did, point the IASB delegates.
We mentioned earlier, the IASB Delegate Assembly is November 17th at 9:00 a.m. There's three important roles for the assembly. One, there's the annual meeting. Two, set the legislative platform, which we, we elect, you know, we chose our platform planks and sent that on to the IASB. So they give the, then the delegates, you know, the top, and they vote on those. And then the third is to convene the nominating caucuses to select candidates for the IASB. to select candidates for the IASB Board of Directors in selected regions. So, and we have an IASB board member in town. So it's, we're in a really good place, and he gives us lots of great information for that. So Rodney has expressed an interest to do that, so we just need a motion to appoint him as our IASB delegate.
So moved.
Need a second. All right. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on to approve the reorganization committee.
Part of the, you know, there's some code things when it comes to reorganization. One is that we need to create a reorganization committee between the Algonah and Laverne districts. There will be ten total members on the, on the committee, two superintendents working together with the committee, one community member from Laverne, two community members from Algonah, Justin Davis and Haley Offerman are going to do that for us, one board member from each district, Rodney is going to serve as our district, and one staff member from Laverne and two staff members from Algonah, Mr. Pete Walts in the middle school, and Ms. Nicole Studer in the elementary. Mrs. Studer taught in Laverne previously, so she brings a really good perspective to that, to that committee. This committee will, they'll meet together and they'll help draft the, the reorganization petition, and then they will help in collecting the signatures for that petition. In the Algonah district, we'll, we'll need to collect four hundred signatures. You guys will, will be part of that process too, as well with the committee. And in the Laverne district, they'll need to collect two hundred and ten signatures from, from, and we need to have those by March two thousand twenty-two. So we'll have, we'll, we'll have this meeting first part of November, and then we'll have till March to collect those, those signatures together. I've put in your general information, some agenda items that have to be included as part of that reorganization committee, as part of Iowa Code two seventy-five twelve. The name of the district, the revenue purpose statement, which, which is important to us because there's some things that have to change in the Laverne revenue purpose statement. Voter approved PEPAL. We have this, they don't. Putting that in the vote so that they do will be important. You know, all necessary studies and surveys, have, have they been done? You know, have, has, has the, the two districts looked at every, every option to do what is best for the districts? In our case with Laverne, we are so intertwined and connected already. You know, we share our, our TLC grant and, and program. We have a joint salary schedule. We have a joint professional development. They send their sixth through twelfth graders here. We share our transportation director. We share our buildings and grounds. There's many, many things that we've already done to connect those districts to do what's best for kids. The number of directors presently, we have seven, so keeping that would be the idea. The method for electing the directors, you know, both districts currently have at-large for, for their directors. I wouldn't think that that would change. Then you submit the plan to the AEA. There's no general obligation bonds from either district. Your assets and liabilities will be merged, so we'll discuss what those are. Also discuss the reorganization sequence and which, what happens to take place after this meeting. Then the petitions, you know, go out. We need four hundred signatures, they need two hundred and ten. Then there's a vote in, in September. It's, it's kind of a brief sequence of, of events.
And then the fall of two thousand twenty-three would be...
The first year.
The first year of March.
Correct. Correct. What is the method of selecting the initial board? Usually, that's, that's an appointment thing, such as six of the Algonah board members join with one of the Laverne. That's probably what we'll recommend for that. And then a legal description of the proposed boundary lines, which I sent you, Ayler's and Cooney's rough draft of that, that they already have. So things are certainly in place, and they're, they're moving. Continued discussion between the, the two districts and this committee is, is a big part of that. So what we need to do tonight is just to simply approve this committee and these members.
And then Laverne does the same thing, right?
They will do the same thing next Monday. Yep.
On, on this list here, Joe, which ones are the, maybe the main things? You know, there's going to be some that are kind of like, you know, kind of...
I would say the revenue purpose statement and the voter approved PEPAL. Currently, the Laverne district does not have voter approved PEPAL. When two districts organize together, you take the lesser in the levies. So that would mean when you reorganized them together, we would lose that sixty-seven cent voter approved PEPAL, which is not something that we can financially do. So putting those, putting that out there, that they need to vote to have that prior to our reorganization is a big part of this.
Okay. That would need to either be a special election or next November?
It would be part of the, it would be part of the September vote.
September, okay. So would there be community meetings in?
Yeah. After this, and we have the petition, then we would, we would organize those community meetings in, in both to talk about the reorganization plan and, you know, the different parts of that, such as the voter approved PEPAL and revenue purpose statements.
Okay, so if the, we will make the positive that the revenue purpose and the PEPAL will be voted yes. That's the goal.
Yeah.
If for some reason it's not...
Then there would not be a vote yes for reorganization.
Correct. And then we have to wait, whatever law says, three months or six months for that next vote to occur, if we want to keep pursuing?
I, I think we can do all that in the September vote.
Right, but if it fails...
Oh, yes, then...
Then it's a six-month process, you probably call right for the next PEPAL vote to occur.
Yeah, we would go back to petitions again.
Start over.
Yep.
All right.
Yep. Go back to where we're at right now.
So we need to promote that pretty heavily in the district.
Yep, yep.
That's the key. All right.
All good questions? Any, any further questions?
The boundary line set, you said this. Is it possible, and maybe, because we got two of them, and maybe I was looking at wrong, does it pass, look at the current lines with the proposed lines, are the same, just to see what it looks like?
Yeah. I, let me see what I can come up with, and really what it is.
More of a visual person, I guess.
It's taking ours, and just adds the Laverne to that. And that's what creates our new boundaries.
So it doesn't add anything different or take away?
Well, it adds all the Laverne district to ours.
Right, but I mean, it doesn't...
It's nothing more than Algonah's, the current, Algonah's...
It's not. Yeah, it's just those two. Yeah. It was, there was some complications to it because of Laverne's dissolution with Corworth and Wesley that took place not too long ago, and where some of those areas lie. But I think the lawyers have everything right. And they send that out to all of those other counties and people to make sure. So I, I think they do have it right.
So say that again on Corworth and Wesley, they redrawn those recently?
Corworth and Wesley, those two districts dissolved, and so those, they, they aren't districts anymore. And part of that agreement, and Mary Beth might be able to help me with this, is the, the communities of Corworth and Wesley are part of the Laverne district. Is that right? So then there's just those communities and then the Laverne district.
Kind of a little tiny chunk of Corworth and Wesley.
Yeah. Right, we got a little piece. The rest, you know, went to other districts like West Hancock.
And Laverne, yeah.
And, and Laverne, yeah.
So CWL dissolved and then...
Yeah.
CW did. Because it was, they were, they were whole grades shared.
Got it.
Was the first.
Yes.
Which on that far, it made sense.
That's what creates the, there was some, they had to look closely to make sure they had things right when they redrew those lines.
Five years ago?
Yeah, recently. Yeah.
All right, any further questions? Hearing none, then we need a motion then to approve the reorganization committee members.
So moved.
Next slide, we have a second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approve an outstate trip, which sounds like a lot of fun.
Mrs. Kirsten Brant, our tag instructor, would like to take some five through twelfth grade tag students to Omaha, Nebraska to watch a performance of Wicked. This performance is offered by the Omaha Performing Arts Group, and this is a great opportunity for those kids.
Not too far out of state, but...
Not too far. Just, just barely.
All right, we need a motion then to approve that.
Motion.
Thank you, Brant. We have a second.
I have a second to motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, then say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Enjoy the trip.
It's a great show. Really good show.
You may need pepper up.
You may have to stand in line. Get a lot of people. It's a good show.
All right, I'm sorry, Joe. Yes, we're moving on to the second reading of the four hundred series.
Yep, second reading. I have, I provided those in paper form, because I think that's helpful when we're looking at these. Some changes for the four hundred series. So on the document you're looking at, I think I have seven changes to the four hundred series that I would recommend. The first change is to update the board's state of guiding principles. I've included in red the role and guiding principles for employees from IASB. Ours, ours was just outdated and didn't include that information. So I would recommend aligning that to the Iowa Association of School Boards recommendation. The second change is in Board Policy four oh one point seven. There's two required pieces that were not included in our current policy. That involves employee travel and compensation. One is to simply add meal expenses. That's a required piece. You don't have to have a meal expense guidelines, which some do, but so we just have to include the words in there. And the second is travel outside the district by the superintendent will be approved by the board president, which wasn't included in there as well. So those are two additions there. The third change is in regard to our cell phone, oh, and I, I take that back. The, the last one is the use of district-owned vehicles. That entire section is a required piece by Iowa Code, and we did not have in our policy. So we have to have that use of district-owned vehicles section. The third change is in four oh one twelve, the district landline and cellular phone usage. Parts of our cellular phone usage policy, they were very dated, included some minutes and different things. So I included what is the current IASB recommendations for this policy in, in regards to cell phones. So it's, you can see, it's a lengthy policy. Again, we just took the Iowa Association of School Boards. Basically, that the, we do provide cell phones to some of our employees, and that, that determination can be made by the superintendent. The fourth change is in staff technology use, social networking. The change is in the first sentence, that computers and the addition of electronic devices and other technology. And you remember from the board policies, we had the last couple of months, we added that phrase in there a couple of times as well. So we have to add that. That'd be the fourth change. The fifth change is in Policy four oh five two, where we are required to post all of our jobs on the Iowa Department of Education job posting, which changed to www.iowaschoolspring.com. It used to be teach Iowa. So it's just updating that location of where we post those. The biggest change is in Board Policy four ten one involving substitute teachers. And we, we discussed this in last month's board, board meeting. We would take out that substitutes would be paid a certain amount up to day ten, and then it would go up to a per diem rate from there. I would recommend taking that out, and that substitutes hired for a long-term substitute position, which we define as ten and more days for the same employee, will be paid their per diem from the start to the end of that assignment. If they miss in the middle for being sick, it doesn't matter. Days one through ten aren't a lesser rate. It's just from here to there, this is what we'll pay you. I think that's a better, better policy for our people. Substitutes are hard to find. When we have people who are willing to come in for two or three, three months, I, I think this is a fair, a fair policy for them. And then the last change is, again, I, adding the www.iowaschoolspring.com to, as the online state job posting.
I think we discussed most of these in the last meeting, so fairly straightforward than we were expecting. So any questions or discussion? Hearing none, then we need a motion then to approve the, the four hundred series.
A motion to approve the four hundred series.
Thanks, Brant. We have a second.
A second.
Thanks, Dad. We have a motion and a second then to approve the four hundred series as presented here, with all the changes. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move then to approving the superintendent's goal, which is also a...
Yeah, I did put that in, in front of a piece of paper as well. The goals, it, it looks, it looks similar to last year, but the goals are written in blue, and those are based all on the new ISIL standards, which are the new standards for administrators in, in the school of Iowa. Couple things. The first one is based on ISIL standard number nine, and the goal would be to manage school operations and resources to promote each student's academic success and, and well-being. We have a district goal, our goal A, that is based on finances. So I think that aligns very well with that. The possible indicators that I put in there, those, those are the same indicators we have as a board, that we, we want to be sure that we're able to maintain. So that, that would be one possible goal. And these are all, these are all ideas. You know, we can get rid of them all if you guys want something different, but they all have some, some meaning as why. The second goal in blue is ISIL standard number five. All of our administrators also have standard five as one of their goals. So it's, it's all tied together that we're working towards the same thing, and it's to cultivate an inclusive, caring, and supportive school community that promotes the academic success and well-being of each student. I also included in there some indicators of progress that we can review throughout the year in, in our progress reviews. And the third goal is in the ISIL standard four. Again, that is also a, a standard that every administrator will have. So we're trying to tie all those together, tying them to district goals. So we are all working to grow professionally as, as a whole, and as, and for the district. It is to develop and to support intellectually rigorous and coherent systems of curriculum, instruction, and assessment to promote each student's academic success, success and well-being. And, you know, Mrs. Eishen just kind of showed you the, the why for all of that stuff. You know, that we want to look at data to make sure we're putting, we're doing the right things, the right forms of instruction, using the right curriculum for our kids. And that, that certainly is a point of emphasis in the district, something we're working hard on, and should be a goal for all of our administrators. So those are three goals that, that I came up with. I did talk to Rodney and Dr. Owen and Todd about these at the progress review. We went kind of a different route in using the actual standards, which I think, I think's a good idea. That makes the, the process that we go through at the end of the year simpler, you know, rather than having three random goals and then looking at the standards, which is what we've done in the past, now it's all tied together.
And I think we thought it was important, since it's really the goals of the principles four and five, that we included that into yours and make it district-wide for sure. So any questions or discussions? They all, we'll discuss also the dates for progress review on these, Don, and another further agenda item.
So the, the question would be probably tonight, you know, is, is this look okay? Is this the direction we want to go? If so, we can, we can move that way. If not, we can, we can do something else. You know, it's really your guys' decision on what you want my goals to look like.
I think we were comfortable in the, in the agenda review, that this is where at least three of us were. If any further discussion. If we are comfortable with that, then we'd need a motion to set the superintendent goals as presented.
I make a motion to accept superintendent goals for fiscal year twenty-two. I make a motion to accept superintendent goals for fiscal year 22.
Thank you, Tom, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Cory, we have a motion and a second. Is there any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next I see is approve a high school vocal fundraiser request.
Yeah, the high.
Progress review dates.
Well.
Yeah, I have a, it's.
It's a little different here.
Go with what's on the agenda.
General information.
Yeah, on the agenda, it's that.
Okay.
Okay.
That's.
So I was just going by that too.
Yep, let's do that one. So the, the high school vocal music fundraising activity is a coffee fundraiser. All of their proceeds will be used for the vocal students' Chicago trip. I have in the general ma, information, October, that is incorrect because we haven't approved out of state trip to Chicago yet. It's actually in April. So we'll approve, or I'll bring that for approval in November. So we just need to approve the coffee fundraiser for the high school vocal music students tonight.
Kids selling coffee, like what, what's a coffee fundraiser?
I, you know, I don't, I don't know a lot more about that, but they estimate about a $2,500 profit. So I'm anxious to see what the fundraiser is.
I like coffee.
Yeah.
Yeah, I figured it's flavored coffee, I don't know. All right, we just need a motion to approve the fundraiser.
I make a motion to approve.
Thanks, Andrew, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Abby, we have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? Hearing none, uh, motion to, say aye for approve the fundraiser.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Awesome, I changed the thought there before. Now we'll go back to set the progress review date.
Yeah, last year we had three progress reviews throughout the year. I, I think those, those are a good opportunity for us to, to discuss progress that I'm making towards goals and, and how things are going in the district and for you guys to provide feedback. We did those in November, February and May. The year before, we actually had four and it was difficult to fit four in from now to my end of the year. So I think three's a better number.
We do the final in June, right?
Yep, yep.
The annual evaluation.
Right.
So I always wondered about May and June always being so close, but.
Yeah.
I mean, we still want to stick with three.
And, and they could, you know, if we go November and, and February, you know, you wouldn't have to go May either. You could probably put that in April.
Well, I was, I mean, do we need, since we do it in June also.
Yeah.
Can you do a?
Wonder if we just missed two, was where I was getting.
Or something like that.
Just go two?
I mean, I just.
Final.
An idea.
Yeah, the third is the final.
And if we did two, I would probably recommend, no, November's next month. You know, go like December, April, you know, something like that.
So it'd be December, December, April, June?
Yes.
And then June, the final, yep.
That's where I was leading, I just thought three maybe was, especially with the May and then the June.
Yeah. I did, I don't remember when we did them last year, but it seemed like we did.
Boom, 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 yeah.
Yeah. Well, we had the one month, I think we got the snow or whatever, something we had to move it. So.
So you're saying December, April, June?
Yes.
What if we do, do something more initiative?
Okay.
A little bit more spread out?
Yep.
You okay with that, Joe?
Yes.
And also?
Yep.
Okay. All right, if everybody's okay, what we've talked about is then doing two progress reviews and then the annual evaluation in June. So we would have the progress reviews December and March, annual in June.
So two formative assessments and one summative assessment, right?
Gotcha. We're climbing the ladder.
Good deal.
Very good.
All right, well then we would need a motion then to set those progress review dates as December and March, because that's all we would be doing and we will need to set June, December and March.
I moved to set the progress dates for the December and March.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Open enrollment.
We have three open enrollment applications this month. Two students open enrolling into the district from, it's actually the Twin River T R V district. They were attending Humboldt. And one kindergarten student who was open enrolling from Algonah to West Bend because the family moved recently into the Algonah district. So that's one we are required to accept. So I do recommend approval of these three applications.
I make a motion to approve the open enrollment.
Thank you, Andrew, we have a second. Here's, Tom, thank you, we do have a second. All right, we have a motion and a second, any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New contracts, we can tell what the next port coming up is.
You can, we're going to be wrestling pretty soon here. So we have two new contracts. Tyler Kraft, assistant varsity wrestling middle school coach. You'll see that both Mr. Kraft and Mr. Corey Keeker have the same. They're, they're structuring that, that staff a little bit different, that sometimes they're going to be in the varsity wrestling room, sometimes they're going to be in the middle school room, using their coaches to the best of their needs. So Tyler Kraft and Corey Keeker, assistant varsity wrestling and middle school coach.
Power teacher in the district?
He is not. He lives in the community, has coached wrestling in, in the past, assistant coached wrestling in the past, but.
For us?
No, not for us, has recently moved to the area. Then we have.
At least now a graduate of Algonah.
He is not. Clarksville, my belief. Corey Beustrom, volunteer wrestling coach. Brian Morgan, volunteer wrestling coach. James Roder, volunteer wrestling coach. Nate Kissinger, volunteer wrestling coach. And then Jay Beustrom as a volunteer wrestling coach pending his coaching authorization renewal. All of these coaches have worked for us in the past as a volunteer or paid position.
All right, any discussion? If not, we would need a motion to approve the new contracts.
Want to approve the new contracts?
Thank you, Brandt, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Todd, thank you, we have a motion and a second, any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then we go into resignations.
We have one resignation, that would be Jesse Adams from Middle School Custodian.
Want to approve the resignation?
Do we have a second, Joe?
Thanks Jesse for, he served a lot of years.
Yep.
I will second the motion.
Thank you, Tom, we have a motion and a second then. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're at that time of night of adjournment, remember? There's a lot going on in our, our school tonight, so don't be afraid to stop in and see some of it, either outside or inside. But we need a motion for adjournment. All right, thanks, Brandt, do we have a second?
Second.
We are adjourned.